Council members Najarian.
Here.
Wintaro.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Drayman.
Here. And could we hear your report, please?
We need a roll call for authority.
Pardon me?
Uh, may I have a roll call for the authority, please?
Let's have a roll call, yes.
Drayman, authority members Drayman.
Here.
Mincy, Najarian.
Here.
Razian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chairman Yusefian.
Here.
There we are.
Mr. Mincy gave me a note, he had to go home, he was not doing well.
All right, well, we will miss Mr. Mincy and his input. Uh, let's hear the, the report, please, Mr. Kasakian.
The agenda for the March 24, 2009 joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority was posted on Thursday, March 19, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much. Um, and, uh, let us hear the item at 1A and B.
1 is Director of Community Development and Housing regarding proposed annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Emergency Shelter Grant, ESG, and Home Investment Partnership Act Home programs for fiscal year 2009, 2010. At 1A is council resolution certifying and adopting a certain negative declaration has been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. And at 1B is a motion, is council motion approving the fiscal year 2009, 2010 CDBG, ESG, and Home Annual Action Plan, subject to amendments by the council and authorizing submission of the plan to the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Your city attorney, just our basic housekeeping here, can you talk to us about 1A and B, and which can be taken? One is a resolution, one is a motion, can you go through those for us?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, they are both council items. We prefer, and the law requires that you adopt the sequel resolution either before or at the same time you consider the substantive matter. Um, the housing authority is here to provide input for you.
Well, it doesn't matter what you prefer.
So they can be taken, they can be taken together.
Yeah, yes, they can be taken together.
All right, very good. Very, very good. Uh, all right. Ms. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and Housing Authority. Uh, you have before you today the, uh, proposed annual plan for the allocation of the HUD funds, primarily Community Development Block Grant, but includes all of the HUD funds that we get. And, uh, these recommendations have been put together by the CDBG Advisory Committee. Um, all of the detail of the planning and the recommendations has been provided in your report. In order to give some context to these recommendations, I'd like to, uh, introduce Mr. Zari Amirian, who's the Chair of the CDBG Advisory Committee, who will give the, the City Council and Housing Authority some background on the recommendations, and then we are prepared to, uh, give as much of a report as you want for the, the CDBG recommendations.
All right, thanks, Ms. Blake. Mr. Amirian, welcome.
Good afternoon. Uh, before I get started, my name is Zari Amirian, I'm the Chair of the Community Development Block Grant Committee. Uh, I do want, uh, to just recognize the other members who have come here today before I get started, um, and if they can please stand, I know they don't want to, but, uh, Mr. Efren Olivares, who's our Vice Chair, uh, Mr. Gary Cornell, uh, Mr. Zares Sinanian, and Mr. Alec Bogdassarian unfortunately was unable to make it due to a prior commitment. Um, that is the CDBG Committee, and I wanted to come up here today to give you some background into, uh, exactly how the process went this year. Um, as you know, we hear both, uh, the social side and, uh, the capital side, and I'd like to, uh, give you some insight. Basically what happens is there's a request for proposal that's put out, uh, proposals come in, they're reviewed by city staff, uh, city staff gives comments, gives an opportunity for these agencies to, uh, respond to those comments, and then, uh, finally those, uh, proposals are given to the CDBG for review. Um, the proposals this year totaled, you know, several hundred pages, almost a thousand pages of material, which, uh, every CDBG member went through diligently. Uh, and then we had two meetings where we interviewed each of the agencies and, um, asked them questions regarding their proposals. Uh, this year's process, uh, unlike some of, uh, you know, the years past, was largely without controversy, and I'd like to thank, um, the, uh, my fellow committee members because really, um, they, they really rolled up their sleeves and came to, you know, garner consensus and get things done. I would like to say that every recommendation that you see, uh, represents a unanimous recommendation by the CDBG Committee, um, which is something I don't know has happened in years past. So I, I would like to, to offer that to you, um, so that you understand the context in which, and what we went through, uh, you know, to get to this point. I would also like to draw your attention to a couple of things. Uh, you know, the CDBG, uh, has, you know, in, in the past couple of years requested that, um, the City Council, uh, be very careful in, um, in pre-designating projects. And we, while the CDBG fully understands and supports the City Council, um, in their right to do so, uh, and, and in the decision-making process, we have seen and heard from community, uh, organizations that it creates a, um, I don't want to be melodramatic, but it does create a chilling effect in terms of the manner in which they approach whether or not they're gonna, they're gonna submit proposals for funds. Um, you know, when there is an initial pot of money and a large percentage of that money is pre-designated, what ends up occurring is what the city, uh, what, uh, what non-city agencies see is a smaller, relatively smaller amount of money. And, uh, they may not apply for those monies, uh, because they don't think, um, you know, there's much of a chance that they'll get them. So it, you know, we would request, the CDBG would request that, um, you know, even city projects come before the CDBG, um, and make proposals to the CDBG so that the committee and the community has the full opportunity to, you know, uh, vet these programs, um, and also there's some context, um, to the decisions that we make. Um, you know, the second point is, uh, you know, we understand the economic situation is a difficult one, and we understand that the, uh, that all of you are doing everything you can to stretch every dollar, um, of the city's finances, but you must understand that the CDBG represents the lowest income neighborhoods in the city of Glendale and the people who have the most need in the city of Glendale. And we would ask that once the city's finances, um, you know, get to the point where they can support, that the City Council, uh, seriously considers matching, um, social funding, uh, for, for the CDBG, especially considering that social funding represents a small percentage of what we're, we are allowed to consider using the CDBG funds. Um, and I believe that proposal is, is, uh, in the city report. Um, and finally, you know, if the merchants don't want to use that $150,000 right away, um, you know, the CDBG would be glad to, uh, disperse that to, uh, low-income neighborhoods. And, uh, I don't think we have a problem of splattering CDBG on the side of, uh, trash, trash trucks, so, uh, I, I, I do appreciate, uh, your, your direction, I do appreciate your input, and I, I just want to say thank you to my fellow committee members, and, uh, thank you to all of the organizations that, uh, came before us. We wish we had the money to give to everybody because I think they're all great organizations, but in the decision-making process, we had to consider both your direction as far as safety net and frontline organizations, as well as the proposals themselves and the questions that were answered. I'm available to answer any questions you might have about that process, um, or, or our thinking on certain matters, and, uh, thank you again for giving me the opportunity to, uh, present this to you.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Amirian, I appreciate you taking the time to.
I understand.
To introduce your, uh, committee and, uh, also to, uh, share with us your, the philosophy you brought to this process. We have, uh, a number of speakers. Um, so let me turn to my colleagues and see whether or not they have any comments or questions before we go to public, or whether or not you can hold those until after. Okay, they're signaling to me they'd like to go to the public, so let's do that. Our first speaker is Araz Khorabashi, and I'm sure she's going to correct me on that, Mr. Kasakian, three minutes, please, followed by Cynthia Nettles.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Araz Khorabashi. As a participant in the Glendale Youth Alliance, it gives me a great pleasure and honor to be here today, and thank you, uh, the staff members of GYA program for their remarkable support that allowed me to be a successful youth in my education, career, and social life. I've been through this program for two years, and the valuable experience that I've got from participating in this teamwork has helped me to find my educational path and step towards my future career. Glendale Youth Alliance has trained us from the very beginning of the process of finding a job, filling out an application, to the very end getting hired and be a successful employee. My first job experience was working in the Church's Office, City of Glendale, in which I found out my interest in accounting and business. I cannot emphasize enough how beneficial the program was for me. Without absolutely any experience, I entered to the business world thinking, "How am I going to succeed?" However, by the exceptional and brilliant programs that the GYA staff members had planned for us, I became not only able to perform my duties as an employee, but also to be one of the most excellent workers. As a matter of fact, after completing 240 hours assigned by the GYA program, I got hired by the Autry National Center as an Ambassador of Membership and Visitor Services. Also through this program, I became allowed to be a recipient of a scholarship which was incredibly beneficial and helpful for me. Without GYA's help and support, I would never be able to accomplish my goals and obtain these achievements. Therefore, I want to thank the Board of Members and administrative staff of the organization for their support. Thank you for the compassion, faith, and confidence you have in us and in the rising generation of youth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cynthia Nettles, followed by Yanitsa Isava.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor Drayman, City Council members, and everyone in the room present. My name is Cynthia Nettles, I am a Glendale resident of 13 years, I am a homeowner, I am a registered voter, I am also the founder and operations manager of the Glendale-based Turning New Corners Social Services Organization, which benefits the betterment of Glendale residents and has done so for nearly eight years. It is my contention that, as evidenced in my March 9th grant proposal evaluation interview, the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee and a reference staff analysis did not fully engage the Turning New Corners 2009, 2010 Community Development Block Grant Funding Application, nor the organization and the existing English Cafe Live Your English as established and blossoming entities. The Turning New Corners organization and programs have been acclaimed and recommended by the Glendale Police Department Community Service Division, the Glendale Central Library, the YMCA Glendale, and published in the USA Armenian Life Magazine and the Glendale News Press as a viable and credible social services organization for the city of Glendale. Additionally, the Turning New Corners organization, board members, and supporters have all been honored to receive the Glendale Chamber of Commerce's Character and Ethics Award. The English Cafe Live Your English project absolutely qualifies as a program for the community from inception to execution. Our original mission and purpose continues in services facilitated by collaborative efforts with other community organizations, such as the Glendale Parks Recreation and Community Services Department Youth and Family Services, the Glendale Youth Employment Opportunity Program, the Character and Ethics Project, the American Cancer Society Relay for Life Glendale Chapter, and the Greater Los Angeles Literacy Network Organization, to name a few. Turning New Corners provides job counseling, motivation, skills assessment, job referrals, training, and job shadowing, internet tools, vocational language, and employee references to low-to-moderate income clientele. Our volunteer staff is comprised of me as operations manager, a business affairs advisor, a website technician, mentors, teachers, and an event liaison. Our reason for being here today is to impress upon you how significant and purpose the Turning New Corners English Cafe Live Your English is to the city of Glendale. English is the foundation to integration and enhanced education, career, and social skills. Turning New Corners has worked diligently and passionately to mentor, teach, share, and then facilitate in whatever way we can so goals can be achieved. We encourage growth. Turning New Corners has for eight years provided innovative and structured programs that have met and exceeded expectations time and again. Turning New Corners is a small grassroots volunteer organization which has, in part-time hours, served and/or financially aided nearly 100 of Glendale's largely underserved residents. Please note that since we are not affiliated with any local, national, international school district, or other city-funded projects, there is also no affiliated financing available to us. Everything that we've done has been at our own burden over these years. So we appreciate your attention now and that you reconsider and add us as one of the recommended projects for this year. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay. Our next speaker is Yanitsa Isava. No, all right. Uh, and, is that you?
Yeah, I am.
Oh, okay, very good.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm here to, with, um.
Did you state your name?
My name, Yanitsa Isava. I'm here because I'm a volunteer person with the English Cafe. Um, this English Cafe helped me a lot, improved my English. I know if you help, uh, Cynthia Nettles with this program will be very good for me and for the people who come into this program. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Isava. Our next, uh, I say speaker, uh, is a collection of cards, I'm told, with a note here, will come to speak as one group. This is Dr. Edward Kudaverdin, and the rest of the group is, uh, Suni Vartanian, Orbel Barsijan, and Arin Sanatkar. Help me. Thank you, Arin. Okay. Dr. Edward.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, and City Council members. Uh, my name is Dr. Edward Kudaverdin, Executive Director of Ark Family Center Inc. We appreciate for giving us this opportunity to serve our low-income youth in this community. Uh, in Ark Family Center Inc., uh, our commitment is to create a safe and, uh, educational space for our youth and families to, uh, so that they can come together and, uh, transform their lives through our program that is called the CFA, Create Freedom and Awareness Program. Thank you for giving us, uh, the grant last year and considering the recommendation this year. Today, I have, uh, a few of our graduates from this program, and they would like to share, uh, their experience about this program. Uh, I would like to invite them to, uh, share that. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Yuna Vartanian, I'm 18 years old, and I have been a volunteer for Ark Family Center for about four years now. Um, and it's really exciting for me to be here. Um, this is actually part of our leadership training as a part of being volunteers for the organization. Um, I was about 15 years old when I did the Youth CFA seminar, and, um, I guess you could kind of call me the stereotypical teenager, um, angry, horrible communication with my parents, I had really bad grades, um, I had absolutely no motivation to get anywhere with my education, and that's why my grades were suffering. And, um, it was around that time where I had a friend of mine who was volunteering for the organization who said, "You know what? I think you're really gonna benefit from this seminar." And I came in, and as the weeks went on, I started really seeing myself become more aware of the things that I was doing that were not working in my life. Um, I wasn't spending enough time on my grades, I wasn't spending enough time talking to my parents, and I became so aware of that. And, um, after I graduated the seminar, um, as with anyone else who, uh, graduates the seminar, we had an opportunity to come back and volunteer for the organization. And, um, it was only then that when I became a volunteer, I realized how important this seminar is for youth because this was not available to me in, um, school when I was going to high school. Um, I didn't know how to deal with those, you know, certain looks you get from people. First thing we think is, you know, throw a punch in someone's face, which isn't exactly the best thing to do. So it was, how do you deal with things like that? And, um, anything else that comes along with it. So I do want to say thank you for funding us last year and the recommendation this year because low-income families like mine couldn't afford to pay for this. Uh, though we got, uh, via private sponsor from me, now it's great to have the funding to be able to, um, kind of extend this to anyone else who cannot afford this. So thank you very much.
You're fine. All right. Good afternoon. So, uh, my name is Orbel Barsijan, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to be here and talk to you. And so, um, I'm 18 years old, and I did the CFA last summer, and it was pretty good. I really liked it. Because when I did the program, I was, right now, I'm here for only, I've been here in the United States for two years. So when you're new in the country, you're, you're, you don't know anything about the country, you're in a shock, in a family, everything is, there is like small conflict everywhere in your family, like, there is like, no, the job and everything, so I need something to improve my life. And I don't know, from out of nowhere, but from GYA, the Glendale Youth Alliance, they just offered me the program, it says it's job training. I was like, "Okay, let's go," and it's a job training for, it would support me for my job. I got into the program and it was eight weeks, and I really liked it because I found out myself, I found out who I am. After that, I got the tools that, I don't have anymore, that conflicts with my parents. Like, let's say, if there's, something is wrong with it, I just go and talk, I don't yell at them, and like, you know what I'm saying, these, these teenagers, they, they don't want to talk. I'm not like that anymore. I just go and talk to them, "Dad, I need something," just, and it's like, "Okay, you take care of me." So this is really good program, and really I'm happy because I got served from last year funding that the city provided us, so I'm, I'm really happy, and I'm, I found out myself, and I know, I'm, soon I'm going to be a leader for our organization, I, I would make a difference in people's life too, because they did a difference in my life, and I really like to share it to them so they have the same thing, they have the same opportunity and safe things that they have. So thank you so much, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Arin?
Hi. Hello. My name is Arin Sanatkar, and I've been with the organization for about eight years. And, um, when I first started with the organization, I was 17, and I went through it too, and, um, and, uh, see, when I was, when I first started, I wasn't graduating, I wasn't gonna graduate, uh, high school, and, um, it was my senior year, and I, everyone's senior year has, has like, you know, eight, I mean, like, four, three classes, but I ended up having like nine classes, and I was like, "I'm not gonna be able to do this, I'm not gonna, you know, actually graduate." So, uh, it was during, it was during that time I started doing the CFA program, and, um, I actually went, like, I actually got the confidence from there, and I went after it, and I got straight A's out of it, and I, I, and I, and I graduated, because I'm nervous being up here.
Here too, buddy.
Yeah. So I actually graduated, and, and it feels good to actually be, um, to accomplish that because for me, like, being an immigrant and, you know, changing three, three different countries, every time I started school, they always, okay.
You can certainly conclude your thoughts.
Yeah. Every time I started school, they always pulled me out, they said, "Okay, we gotta go, we gotta go to a different country now." So when I started here, and I was like, "Okay, I'm gonna, you know, I, I want to do this, and I want to actually graduate and stuff," but something inside me would always tell me, "No, we're not gonna be able to do this because they're gonna pull you back out." But with the CFA program, I was able to overcome that and actually go after it and, you know, graduate, and it was the biggest accomplishment for me, so, thanks for letting me share.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Quickly, yes, sir.
Uh, I would like to really appreciate the CDBG Advisory Group for supporting, uh, us, and also, uh, GYA for, uh, sending us low-income youth, like Orbel, for a program.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Okay, our next speaker is Mary Mason, Principal of, uh, Mark Keppel Elementary School. Hello again. And, uh, followed by Arsene Hovenesian.
Good afternoon, my name's Mary Mason, I'm principal at Mark Keppel Elementary School here in Glendale. I'm very pleased to speak to you this afternoon on behalf of the CASP's Intervention and Prevention Group Counseling Program that we have at our school. This is our first year in the program, and we're very pleased, um, that we was able to expand last year. Several of our students participate, and we're starting in as early as kindergarten, and we have students participating up through grade five. Um, our teachers and our parents are very appreciative of the program, I get constant emails about how thankful they are that we have, um, the program here at Keppel. And so, while I know the economy is tight and budgets are tight, I know that seeing progress in students is priceless, so thank you very much for your support, and, um, we hope it can continue.
And you might tell people what CASP's is.
CASP's is?
At least what it stands for, too.
That's right. It's the Committee for Armenian Students in Public Schools, but the students that participate are not only from Armenian ethnicity, we have, um, lots of ethnicities in Glendale, and we have a variety of students participating.
Thank you very much. Uh, our next speaker is Arsene Hovenesian.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. Um, I'm Arsene Hovenesian, Executive Director of CASP's Committee for Armenian Students in Public Schools, and just like Dr. Mason said, despite our name, our services are for all students in Glendale. And, um, I'd like to, first of all, thank the CDBG Advisory Board, because I, uh, we really appreciate the way they read the applications completely, interview us, and ask us very relevant questions, and we appreciate their time, and we hope that you will honor their recommendations. We've been here for the past five years, I think you've seen me every year, and we're very happy that the program, uh, receives funding each year, but, um, we hope that you will honor their recommendation because if, um, if you do, that means we can finally expand to a third school, and we hope that will happen. And I have brought our brochures and our latest newsletters so you can better get to know our programs.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Cecilia, I can't tell whether it's NGO or UGO? Oh. NGO, okay, go. Sorry.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Cecilia. I'm from the Housing Rights Center, I'm the Outreach Coordinator. I'm really excited to be here on behalf of the Housing Rights Center to discuss the continued need and importance in the community of Glendale for a fair housing program. The Housing Rights Center is a private nonprofit civil rights organization dedicated to supporting and promoting freedom of housing. Um, we investigate housing discrimination complaints, employ legal strategies to fight housing discrimination, provide predatory lending information and referrals through a hotline, have an active and effective outreach and education program through which we conduct community workshops and presentations, and offer a fair housing certification training for housing providers. We also offer landlord and tenant counseling regarding legal rights and responsibilities. The Housing Rights Center conducts presentations to path-achieved and Glendale residents, to their residents every other month, as well as collaborate with social services and community organizations, such as the Neighborhood Legal Services and the Glendale Homeless Coalition. The Housing Rights Center also participates in community events such as the Glendale Homeless Resource Fair. Last year, HRC conducted a fair housing workshop for landlords and a housing rights workshop for tenants. The following statistics highlight the need for a continued partnership. During 2007 to 2008, 1,367 residents of Glendale contacted us for assistance. HRC was able to assist them in Armenian, Russian, Spanish, and English. Furthermore, we investigated 71 claims of housing discrimination in Glendale. This year, the Housing Rights Center will also be hosting the 10th Annual Housing Rights Summit, and we would love to invite you all to attend. I have invitations with me right now. Um, the Housing Rights Center has helped many residents of Glendale who are marginalized from the mainstream community due to language barriers, limited income, physical or mental characteristics and impairments, or a combination of these attributes. We thank the city of Glendale's continued support and commitment to fair housing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our last speaker is Aristides Farall.
Welcome to, uh, council members, Mayor Drayman. Uh, my name is Aristides Farall, I'm the, uh, Controller for New Horizons Family Center. Uh, CDBG currently funds us for our after-school and, um, program. We provide, uh, services to low and moderate income youth in South Glendale, primarily in South Glendale, which numbers up to almost 200 throughout the course of the year in the, and we wish to thank, um, Mr. Amirian and the rest of the CDBG Committee, and, um, want to express our support for their recommendations. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Farall. All right, that is our last speaker. Um, let me turn to my colleagues. I'll start on my right this time, Mr. Yusefian.
Did you just get another card?
I did. Thank you. Natalie Camora, how could I?
She was giving.
How could I, how could I miss the card? They just handed it to me.
She was giving you a positive look.
I'm getting punchy, I'm getting punchy. I'm getting punchy, I'm getting punchy, and we haven't even gotten to the main event tonight, so--
I know.
Apologize.
We're all looking forward to that. I just wanted to also express my appreciation for the work of the CDBG Committee, and we are very pleased at Path Achieve Glendale to have the recommendations for community development block grant funding and ESG funding for Path Achieve Glendale. And I didn't state my name for the record.
You didn't.
Natalie Camorro, Path Achieve Glendale. There we go. The CDBG funding will allow us to continue our community outreach program to people who are homeless living on the streets of Glendale, and connecting them to services at our access center and to our emergency housing program. The ESG funding will be supporting our 40-bed emergency housing program for individuals and families, and it's very critically important right now. As you know, obviously, there's a greater demand for homeless services in the community, and we've seen more families and families of a larger size, so we're getting more six-member families coming in asking for help. And so it's very important to keep these beds open. So we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You very much.
Yes, question.
Yes, Mr. Yusefian, of course.
I had a question from her. Sorry about that. The part that you're getting the money from CDBG, what is, what do you guys do? I mean, you have actually a person that goes out there, contacts the homeless?
We have two people, and three during the winter months, who will go out to visit folks who are the ones that you see on the park benches in the community, living in doorways, wherever they are out in the community. We get calls from businesses to come out and talk to people. We can't force them to accept services, but we will offer them services and bring them in to the access center for additional assistance. And we are working collaboratively with the Police Department and with Parks and Recreation, Adult Recreation Center, to also address the more habitual homeless that you see--
What is the latest hour they work?
Well, we were working until 11 o'clock at night. We-- that stopped making sense, because it's very hard to refer people in the later evening hours. So I believe we're out to 7 o'clock in the evening now, and 7:00 in the morning is when we start.
The reason I ask is because recently, I was at an event, and as I came to drive down on Broadway, there was an individual, I think, who decided to use one of the bus shelters as a makeshift home, and literally had taken the whole bus bench and everything that was within there. I mean, he had enough belongings there that I don't know how many shopping carts it took to bring that out. So I just didn't know till what time it goes. It was around 10 o'clock at night, so-- So was something that, in that type of a situation, are you relying on the Police Department to direct them?
At that hour, that would probably be the Police Department that would interface with that person. The challenge would be, where would we take them at 10 o'clock at night? Because there is no alternative at the moment. During the winter shelter season, we can work something out with the operators of the winter shelter, and we are out later helping them with that program, but that ended on the 15th of March.
Okay. Thank you.
Yusefian, I'm going to leave the ball in your court.
Well--
What comments you may have.
Mr. Mayor, I will say that for a first time, there is no fights, there's no pushing and shoving, and everybody's pretty happy. And I will tell you, I have not gotten a single call from anybody that has been discontent with the process or any sharp words. I think this has been one of those situations, that everything has gone very smooth. So I intend to follow the direction of the CDBG Committee, and want to congratulate them for hard work that they did. I did take some time and review the tape, and so, good process. And I want to thank the staff for helping the CDBG Committee to reach the conclusions that they did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Yusefian. Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. The first thing I'd like to state is my wife, Darlene, serves in the capacity as an Advisory Board Member to the Path Achieve, although she does not receive any income from that position. And my sidebar with Mr. Howard, our City Attorney, confirmed that, that that, because of that, there is not a conflict. So I will be approving the social service appropriations as presented to us by the CDBG. I'm happy this year with the capital improvement allocations made by the CDBG, an excellent, excellent series of appropriations. And of course, I'm referring to the community pool allocation. I think it's a, hopefully will be an excellent project. We'll be hearing about that later on at the council meeting. Next week, or is it tonight?
No, it's next week.
Next week. It's the 31st. So I'm happy with their, both their social services and their capital neighborhood improvement project allocations. And I'm not going to disrupt the apple cart.
Okay. We have two votes for non-disruption of apple carts. Mr. Quintero.
And I'm prepared to support the recommendations of the committee.
Mr. Weaver.
Well, I guess I'm a broken record, sat here 12 years, and I remember when the Housing Department received recommendations from council members on who ought to be on the committee to evaluate the applicants. And that fell apart eventually to the point where seated city council members each appointed members to a committee and put it on TV to make it work better. True, this is the first year that has happened, that no dissension in the ranks, so to speak. Very aware of the, I'd be willing to bet hundreds of hours that the committee puts in, visiting the sites, analyzing everything thoroughly. It's really not fair that some good programs don't get funding, but they're just, they're decreasing them out all the time to work with, which is sad. And of course, the only component of the entire program that I do not agree with at all is the pre-designation of projects. You read in the paper today, right on the front page, talked about code enforcement, garages being converted to living quarters. But this year, because of the pre-designation, not one single additional penny to code enforcement. Yet, this council has sat here and stated that we want stricter enforcement on the code requirements of the city. Yet, we're not giving one single more dollar. We're not contributing any monies to the ADA curb ramp and sidewalk improvements, yet we have had numerous speakers over the years and the months castigating us for not doing more. But not a single penny in did not apply, and I wonder why. Of course, we all know that President of the United States said in his stimulus package, "I do not want to see one single dollar spent on building swimming pools." I happen to agree this is the wrong time to be talking about a swimming pool when we're cutting millions of dollars out of the city budget. Code enforcement, to me, is much higher priority. If you want to be at ADA curbs, that'd be a question mark. But code enforcement should have more. Giving one and a half million dollars to a pool at this time in this economy, to me, is the wrong way to go. I'm going to lose on this four to one, but I have a right to sit here and give my opinion. On that, I thank the committee for doing a great job, as usual.
Well, Mr. Weaver, don't be so sure. You have one more speaker to your left there. You may lose on this five to one, so--
I forgot about that. I don't want to-- I'm sorry.
Since this is a council motion, I would just like to tell that both staff and Advisory Committee did a very good job. So, and I have a question. How many, with these appropriations, how many youth employees will we have this year? Approximately.
Madal.
I'm sorry, I'm not quite sure what your question is.
How many youth employees--
GYA.
GYA. Yeah. Youth employees.
With the money you're going to get.
I'm going to have to ask Mr. Duran to answer that question.
Looking it up.
Mr. Duran.
Yes, Mayor Draymond, members of the City Council, Chair Yusefian. I actually have to refer to the project descriptions, which are part of your packet, to look that up. I believe it's in the neighborhood of-- The CDBG funds pay for the supervision of the program. It doesn't pay for the actual youth wages or the subsidies of the wages. And so I think it pays for about four or five seasonal supervisors to run the program. That's what the CDBG funds used to pay for. And so their summer program, I believe, is a couple of hundred youth, so CDBG is contributing significantly to that number. Probably anywhere between 50 to 75 youth that they can serve because of the CDBG funds.
If I can just, the description says 140 to 250 youths annually. 140 to 250.
Annually, okay. So that's year-round.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Perazian. Well, in the long time, is it, long honored tradition of not upsetting the apple cart, I also agree that we have an equitable presentation, and I want to thank everyone on the committee. Mr. Marion, Varis, Cornell, and everyone else whose faces I can't make out, because you're sitting too far away and I have my glasses with me. Thank you for your hard work and your consideration. We appreciate that. The city appreciates that. This is a very tough time for cities all across the country. Glendale's no exception. We have a great need and limited funds, and I think you've done an excellent job, especially considering those limits. So thank you again. I don't know if you have any other comments you'd like to make, Mr. Marion.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for your comments, and that I would be, shame on me, extremely remiss in not thanking Mr. Duran and Mr. Correo and the entire staff of all the work that they did. I don't, I don't think I said that, and I'm sitting there going, "Did I thank them or not?" Because really, all of the packets that you see in front of you, all of the comments, is specifically theirs. So they do a lot of the initial work, so that hundreds of hours that is spent, I'm sure they spend even more. So I wanted to thank them, and thank you as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I missed that point too, Mr. Mayor. Apologize, staff. I know you did a lot.
Well, yes, Mr. Yusefian.
I'd like to, at this time, I'd like to move one A and B.
Second. We have a motion and a second on one A and B. And our City Attorney has explained that we can take these together.
Unless there's an objection, and a council member wants them separated.
Hearing none. Mr. Kasakian, if you could call the roll, please.
Council Members, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
Will we adjourn for the City Council?
Second.
City Council is adjourned.
Will we adjourn for the Housing Authority?
Second.
We're adjourned.